So, let me know when you're ready, Sherri. Are we on? Okay. May we resume the meeting, please? And the next item on the agenda is no less complex. And that is the latest report on the soil processing recycling permit and particularly the history thereof. And Planning Director has prepared that, so I assume he's going to take the ball?
Yes, thank you, Honorable Mayor, members of the council. This matter regarding the dirt stockpiling and soil recycling on the Bayland site has been an ongoing issue of concern over the past few months at council. And we're directed, staff was directed, to do some research, clarify some issues related to the regulatory status of the permits and the controls over the site. And so, we've put together for you is a fairly brief history, and I'll just kind of go through it as quickly as I can. The site was first authorized in 1977 to allow for reclamation and surcharge of the closed landfill. Conditions of approval at that time related to adequate dust control measures is requested by the city engineer. There were no conditions related to either the amount or height of material being moved on-site, nor was there any reference to stockpiles in any shape or form. The next iteration of the permit authorization was in 1983. And it was again characterized as continued reclamation of landfill property. And clearly specified that stockpiling incidental to reclamation was a permitted activity. At first, this permit first introduced the site earthwork specifications, which were prepared by the applicant at the time to serve as kind of the engineering control over the site. And those included a 25-foot stockpile height, 25-foot-high stockpile limit for loose material cleared from the site. Did not include a stockpile height limit for imported fill. There are a number of proceedings to revoke that use permit over time. It was initiated by the city. Their grounds for revocation were identified as dust generation, lack of compliance with operational conditions, and visual concerns, among other. At that point in time, a 25-foot height limit was imposed as a dust control mitigation measure. So, that was the first time that the 25-foot-high stockpile limit was identified as a requirement of the city, and it was imposed for dust control. Specifically, the record reflected there were concerns that if the piles exceeded 25 feet, the operators were not able to provide watering, get water onto the dust pile or the pile, so it was generating more dust. So, the 25-foot height limit was seen as adequate for allowing for dust control of the site. Then, the permit was again, was extended into 1997. And this was the first permit that recognized stockpiling of soil and sand for resale as a permitted use, while still recognizing the function of preparing the site for long-range development. The stockpile limit condition carried forward to the wording of the materials may be stockpiled no higher than 25 feet above ground level. And there was really not a lot of discussion in that particular permit iteration regarding the stockpile heights. That was not an issue of concern at the time. Then, the last, the current permit, UP 803, was approved in 2004, 2004. And it retained the same stockpile height language with a slight modification. It referenced 25 feet above surrounding grade. So, the word "surrounding grade" was added in the condition of approval at that particular point in time. Since that time, the use permit, an extension request was made, and a timely matter in 2007, in recognition of a number of the site management issues that have occurred over time. That permit has been put on hold to allow for a much more robust operational plan to be developed. There was certain informational requests that the previous operator was not able to provide to the city to our satisfaction. The property owner ultimately found a different operator, a new operator, who went through the process of developing an operations plan. The plan has been subject to a couple rounds of regulatory review by both county environmental health and regional board. And it's still going through some final reviews. We're expecting to have that finalized and scheduled for Planning Commission review later this year. And that's the, that's the schedule today. In the interim, operating under the previous use permit, the applicant has agreed to a number of other operational measures that weren't called out in the previous use permit. These included having the city have a compliance audit performed by an independent consultant to evaluate this facility's soil testing procedures and intake procedures, to ensure that fundamentally, the material being brought onto that site qualified and constituted clean fill at the time. And again, there's been a number of modifications recommended to the operations plan that will be embedded into the permit that the Planning Commission reviews in the upcoming year to ensure that those conditions are carried for and carried forward in a, in a formal way. Right now, it's, they're not formally part of the conditions of approval to require this kind of testing and certification. They've also been working with the Public Works Department on dust management issues, having an extra water truck available on-site is needed to deal with dust generation. And they've also been working with the regional board with implementing a series of best management practices for stormwater. And that's an ongoing work in progress with the regional board. So, that's kind of the regulatory environment. The other issue relates to the physical site changes over time. And again, it's clear that the elevations of the site have, have gone up substantially over time. You know, the first topographic data we had, which was pretty rough spot elevations with, associated with that 1977 permit, generally showed elevations in the 14 to 18-foot range south of the channel and 20 to 29 feet north of the channel, so the, being the kind of divider. And, you know, over time, the site elevations have increased on the order of 30 to 50 feet. You'll find elevations out there now, you know, exceeding 60 feet in areas, in some spots exceeding 70 feet nowadays. So, there's been a substantial increase in the, in the height of the, of the site. The site elevations over time definitely is the case. And, you know, again, the, trying to provide more context here in terms of not really getting into what the past management practices or regulatory management decisions were that were made in the city over the last 40 years of that site. They're really kind of looking forward to how the city might want to regulate this use as it continues over time, if it continues over time. And, you know, to try to deal with some of these problems that have been occurring on an ongoing basis. And the first, you know, the question that has come up most directly to the council here is whether or not the 25-foot-high stockpile limit has been exceeded. And I think we all recognize the site has gone up in elevation by well over 25 feet in the last 40 years. But, given the basis for the stockpile limit that was established under the permit, it was a dust control measure. It was not an aesthetic measure. It was not tied to any sort of benchmark of a physical elevation or a fixed elevation. It's made it very clear that it was limited, the stockpile height was limited to 25 feet from surrounding grade, not, not existing grade, not from a fixed benchmark elevation. And in fact, the basis that a stockpile needed to be accessible by a watering truck, and it had to be less than 25 feet, or 25 feet or less, to be accessible from a watering truck would further go against the argument that there was, this was tied to some abstract benchmark. Because again, if it was tied to an abstract benchmark, the intent of the condition to apply, allow for adequate water on a, on a pile would not really, there'd be no relationship between an abstract benchmark and tying height to that versus the idea of a pile where someone could literally drive next to with a watering truck and get water to the height of a 25-foot pile. So, believe that the record is very clear that the 25-foot-high stockpile limit relates to loose dirt material above a fixed level elevation. Begs the question whether or not, you know, again, was the intent that the site be allowed to be elevated over time? What the intent was? I wasn't here for those 40 years of permitting. All I can tell you is by looking at the record, there was no demonstration in the record of those 40 years of permit that that was a regulatory requirement or a condition to tie the, the increase in elevation over time to that site. Again, through any of the renewals, there was never a mention made of trying to fix it to a fixed point in elevation. Since this height elevation, the 25-foot stockpile limit isn't a valid tool for measuring or trying to regulate the aesthetic impacts of this facility. I think staff recognizes, the community recognizes this facility does have aesthetic impacts, and its operations continue to have aesthetic impacts. So, I think the real question is how, in a permit moving forward, are we able to regulate the aesthetic impacts of this facility in a more transparent and enforceable manner? And I think that raises some questions as to what are the aesthetic impacts? Does it relate to the overall scope of the operation, the number of acres that are disturbed? Is it the, the stockpile height of loose material that are visible? Is it the, the increase in grading that's occurred over time to raise the, the elevation of the site? Those are all kind of different aesthetic issues that are going to require different conditions of approval or management tools to address in a future condition of approval. To say, well, we're going to limit the aesthetic impacts of this operation, it has to take that next step of really trying to determine what aspect of this operation we're trying to physically, from aesthetic standpoint, control and regulate. And I think that's really a challenge. And to the extent we can get some valuable input, and the Planning Commission can get that kind of input, when they consider this permit update, that would be a very valuable input for them and for staff. The other sort of ongoing issue has been dust control over time. And again, you see back even in the early 80s, when the permit was threatened for revocation, one of the issues was dust generation on-site. Clearly, you know, we need to look at what are our best regulatory tools and operational tools that we can apply to this project to try to minimize that. There are certain challenges, given the inherent physical nature of the operation. You're, you're constantly moving material, the environmental conditions of wind, wind conditions out there make it problematic as well. But, this next permit, we'll be looking at whatever kind of strategies, whether it's operational management or regulatory, that we can impose on this operation to have a more responsive and responsible approach toward dust control on that site. And the third, I think, major focus is to ensure that the material that enters that site is, constitutes clean fill as defined, and that the city makes sure that the operator has an ongoing record of documenting that material, the source of that material, its testing, and that we maintain and continue an ongoing auditing procedure over time, the life of this permit, however many years it is, is that the city should have the full ability to be able to audit their records at any time and ensure that we can, we can track the, the safety of the material that's entering that site. The last concern has been raised several times. It's somehow raising the elevations, as has occurred historically over the site, is somehow creating a new benchmark for future development, from which future development can, can be extended or applied. And that's not really the case. The city will control, like every other aspect of the development for the Baylands that gets approved, city will control the ultimate pad elevations, the building elevations for that site. So, if there's material that's stockpiled at elevation 60, and the city's decision is to, that elevation should be 20 or 25, the developer will have to revise the plan to, to meet what the city approves. Whatever material's been put out there temporarily over the years has no limitation on the city's ability to regulate that. And you'll see that even the draft grading plan prepared by the applicant, in conjunction with the specific plan that's reviewed in the environmental impact report, substantially reduces the, proposes pad elevations on this portion of the site, which is the landfill only, substantially below what they are today currently in the field. So, you know, that, that's not really, the activity that's occurred out there on a temporary basis does not lock the city in any sort of final land use decisions or elevation decisions for that site in the future. With that, I just want to close and clarify that there are two operations that occur on the landfill portion of the Baylands. This report and all the information and the research we did related to the soil, stockpiling and recycling facility called Bayland Soil Processing, or BSP. There's another operation called Brisbane Recycling, which is located at the north end of the site, that's business operation primarily relates to recycling of construction materials such as concrete, asphalt, crushing, grinding, recycling of those kind of materials. The permit record here is not related to Brisbane Recycling. They have their own use permit process. And whatever happens with this particular operating permit for, for Brisbane Soil Processing, we will anticipate imposing the same kind of regulatory regimen to make sure that that facility operates, I think, at a higher degree of compliance and control for the city than, than currently happens. So, I do want to make sure we're all clear, there are two different operations that occur on the landfill portion of the site. With that, I'd be glad to answer any questions the council might have.
I think I had a couple of questions that were directed to the city attorney. I wonder if he would please respond to them?
Be happy to. Just give me one moment to bring those up on my, my screen here.
Okay. What were the questions?
He'll tell us.
Okay.
Mayor Miller, your first question was, under what city authority are the various operations conducting their, their businesses? And again, the, the hearing tonight, or the discussion tonight is focused on the Brisbane Soil Processing operation rather than the, the other recycling operation. With respect to the Brisbane Soil Processing operation, the authority is under the, the use permit that was issued in 2004. And prior to its expiration, there was the, the timely application for the extension for the, the multiple reasons explained by, by John. There's been an ongoing dialogue and discussion, actually, a removal of the, the former operator that submitted the request for the extension, and the substitution of a new operator. But, at this time, the authority would be under that prior permit, based on the city's extending it, based on the timely application and the continuing review of the, the renewal permit application at some point in the, the near future. That permit will go to the Planning Commission for either approval, denial, or approval with new conditions on it. Your second question-
So, they're operating under what? Is there a formal extension that's been issued at some, is there something in writing that says they can continue indefinitely? I mean, what's the written legal authority that they have there? Because the original permit was, was in it for five years? If so, if that's the case, then they're beyond that. So, there must be some basis of legal extension of that time. That's what I'm trying to get handle on.
The, the extension, again, there, there was a written application for the extension prior to the expiration of the, the 2004 permit. That application for extension has not been denied at this point, so it's still pending. So, it would be that written application for the extension that would be the legal basis for the continuing operation at this point.
So, if somebody just applies, it can go on indefinitely? If the city doesn't do anything?
Clearly, at, at some point, there needs to be a, a decision. It needs to go to the, to the Planning Commission for, for approval. There were a number of, of reasons that, that were the basis for the, the lengthy extension. I believe that the city required a number of, of studies, of reviews, that were actually not required by the original permit. I wouldn't disagree that the, the extension is, is lengthy, and it needs to be brought to a conclusion very, very quickly. I think, again, looking forward, if there is an extension request, then action should be taken fairly expeditiously rather than allowing it to continue. But, in this particular case, the city has not taken action to deny the permit, and would need to do so to terminate the use.
Okay. So, these processes don't have any sunset? I mean, it's up to the city to decide when they want to get around to dealing with a new permit? That's what I'm trying to get at.
Yeah, effectively, that, that's correct. I mean, the, the city, in this particular instance, through the, the ongoing dialogue and, and process, has not terminated the, the permit. And it, it does continue, the city in its discretion, has continued the ability to operate under the existing permit, pending, again, either the ultimate denial, approval, or modification of the use permit.
Okay, got it.
Second question was, what are the legal restrictions on the, the height of the, the height of the fill? And again, as, as John referenced, going back over the original permits, it appears that the, the concern for the 25-foot height was based on the ability to provide watering and dust control for those dirt piles. I looked carefully to see if there was any reference to a set elevation that could be used as a set point, and that the 25 feet cannot exceed that from the set elevation that is not currently existing in the, in the permit history. Of course, going forward, if aesthetics are a concern, that is an appropriate consideration for the council in any approval of, or the Planning Commission in any approval of a future use permit. And if the intent is to set an absolute height above which the fill cannot go further, then what should be done in any future permit is setting a base elevation, and then setting exactly what the height would be from that base elevation, so that it can be actually measured and determined.
So, essentially, under the current permit, they could put fill of 1,000 feet, and it still wouldn't be illegal?
If, if the fill reached a point where it was becoming a problem, then the Planning Commission, as the issuing authority, does have the right to, to immediately impose additional conditions on that, on that permit.
But that would have to be done?
That would have to be done.
Okay. Now, the reason I ask the question is people are saying, you know, the height is illegal. And from what I hear, hear you're saying that, you know, there is no such thing as an illegal height at this point. There is an illegal stockpile maybe, but there isn't an illegal height per se.
Based on the existing permit, that's correct. So, in theory, it could continue to, to rise as long as it was never 25 feet above what the surrounding grade was. However, as I mentioned, I mean, at the point where, whether it's now or at some point in the future, if there were aesthetic considerations or intent by the Planning Commission to stop the height immediately, it could do that, and it would have to impose that additional condition.
Okay.
And your, your final question was, what are the respective responsibilities of the Bay Area Air Quality Control Board and the city? The city has the right, under the use permit, to enforce the conditions. Those would include dust control, health and safety issues. And so, in the, the provisions of the, the use permit, it states that if there are complaints or concerns, then the city does have the authority to either require that the, the operation cease operation, cease operating until the, the dust control has been taken care of, or that they immediately need to implement appropriate dust control measures to stop whatever dust intrusions there, there are. That is a separate authority and somewhat overlapping with the authority of the, the Bay Area Air Quality Control District, which is involved with, with, with health and safety issues. And independently, based on its regulations, if there's a complaint, it can come out and cite the, the operator for violation of the air quality standards. And that would be pursued through the, through the BAC MED process separately from the city. There's nothing that would prevent both the city and BAC MED from taking the appropriate action if there was dust that was becoming a problem on the site.
The only thing I would add to that is that the Bay Area Air Quality District has the ability to implement fines, and I don't believe under our permit we currently have that. So that's something we may want to think about going-
Okay, the Air Quality District has a fining system, but our current use permit that's sort of continuing indefinitely does not have a fining process?
Correct.
We have a shutdown.
We-
You can shut them down, but you could do that, right?
Right. And I want to put in the context that shutting them down has been event-driven. So in other words, it's been to shut them down for a couple hours at a period of time when the wind is up or something of that nature. I do want to indicate that, and be helpful, I think, to the council in your conversation tonight, both myself and the public works director did have an opportunity to talk to the Bay Area Air Quality Management District today. They kind of walked me through, I guess, a couple of different processes they have in terms of dust mitigation, dust abatement. Basically, their process is through the California's Health and Safety Code, and that they can apply fines to businesses who are operating and causing public nuisances, which basically this would be. The inspector, who actually has all of San Francisco and right now is also dealing with San Mateo County because the San Mateo County person's out on leave, was out to the businesses today, both businesses, and contacted them, had an onsite visit with them. And I know that, and Randy may want to speak to this, that Randy and his inspector, and the inspector from the Bay Area Air Quality Management District want to get together and actually do an onsite visit with the businesses, and so that we get a higher level of coordination between the city and the Bay Area Air Quality Management District. One of the things that I think, on a staff level, that we want to consider when we go forward with a permit renewal, is this whole issue of the ability to levy fines if we have activity that goes on and it's unabated or not handled appropriately. Because I think that's probably the best way to get people's attention. Now, Randy, did you want to add any?
No, sir, nothing to add.
Okay, questions?
Can I make a couple comments?
Yeah, what?
Yeah, I have some questions, huh?
Yeah, usually questions first and then comments.
I'm sure your comments will be questions.
But you can phrase them as kind of questions, right?
I'll let somebody else go first, because, you know, it's sort of will let me calm down a bit.
Oh, okay.
So someone else can go first that wants to ask a question.
I can, I meant-
Okay.
You know, I'd have to, on that 25-foot level, I mean, I understand it, the way it's written and everything, the way you explained it and everything, but I gotta say that I just don't think at some point that's really what was envisioned, you know, is this thing go up high and stuff like that, as high as it is. But it is what it is right now. I mean, that's certainly something to deal with in the next round of this. But I just, you know, I think that the intent and then what was written are two different things. But I understand that, you know, the legal part of it, there's the legal part of it, and that's the way it's written. So I'm somewhat disappointed in that, but that's just, you know, my opinion. Randy, just on, you know, I think about it, and I know I hear comments from citizens like, man, we're gonna let them build on that? And just from an engineering perspective, you know, knowing that there's, you know, vertical loads and stuff, and compaction and stuff like that, because you just kind of comment on soils and stuff like that, how actually-
Sure, sure, sure. To my knowledge, there's no documentation of the placement of that fill according to engineering standards, so it would be classified as unengineered backfill, which means it would have to be removed and replaced according to engineering standards before we'd allow it to be built on. And of course, there is the challenge they also have with that, with it being a former municipal solid waste landfill, is that they're also going to have to establish a cap pursuant to Title 27 standards that would meet Cal Recycle's approval. And so how they are going to place the cap of the appropriate permeability and have the correct vertical separation between the underlying waste matrix and the proposed development above it is going to require a significant movement and replacement of what's out there now.
Thank you.
Yeah, yeah, you know, it was very interesting reading the staff report and then, yeah, touching base with Clay over the weekend just to, you know, to get that clarification and, you know, about the height of the stockpiles, and that the stockpiles are different than elevations. And so, you know, they did a great job of kind of walking us through it, John, and, you know, not only just, you know, explaining it, but just also kind of, you know, kind of like sharing your, kind of your feelings about like, well, hey, you know, this is something that happened in the past, and yeah, we definitely don't want to make those, you know, to continue those, that kind of mistake, or just misunderstanding of, you know, what we would allow out there. But of course, then, you know, people are also concerned about, you know, what the future will have out in the Baylands. And I'm glad you brought up that question, Clark, because, you know, the site has not been capped properly, and the soil that's out there is just soil on top of the garbage, and it will need to be properly, you know, mitigated. But it hasn't been done yet. You know, John talked about the elevations, and the elevations that, to build, that are coming from UPC's plan, those elevations are based on sea level, right, John? I mean, so you can't really look at the stockpiles out there, you know, and use that as a reference. You have to look at sea level, and then looking at 20 to 25 feet in the north, and 30 to 40 in the south. You know, for me, you know, this whole issue really centers around dust. Though the heights of the soil is alarming, you know, I have to be honest, it wasn't the top priority for me on my radar screen. But when I saw video footage of the dust that was coming off of the mounts, and then that really concerned me. And it's like, okay, you know, that's, we need more appropriate measures in place to make sure that it's safe for everyone. And so, you know, you talked about some alternative dust control measures. What, you know, I mean, can you put tarps over some of these mounts that, you know, to control dust, or what are some other measures that we might be able to entertain?
Well, I think that there's probably a variety of different strategies that we can try to implement. I mean, I think the most important one is getting the attention of the operators. And I, you know, I do believe they, you know, are, they're certainly aware of the issue, and I think they do try, but they often, you know, the situation gets away from them for whatever reason. So I think that what we really have to have is a dialogue with the property owner, with the operators, with the city, and with Bay Area Air Quality Management District to come up with the best practices and the best strategies we can to try to mitigate this. You know, it's a windy site, and that's, you know, unfortunately, the reality that they've got to deal with. You know, that's not an excuse for having dust fly off of it. So, you know, I think our thought was that maybe that this would get referred back to a council subcommittee to work with staff, and then we'll, like I said, we had a good conversation with Bay Area Air Quality today, and I think that's a good first step or next step in this process. And I do want to say that our inspector has been out there on multiple occasions, and Randy's been out there on multiple occasions. And our police department responds when there's, you know, calls come in at odd hours or something. So I mean, it's definitely, you know, not new news to them, nor is it something that, you know, we take lightly. And it's a challenge to get our, you know, our arms around. But I think that the, you know, we, the issue has been exacerbated in the last, you know, six months because the, you know, the amount of dirt that's come out there. And of course, that's a different, whole different issue that we got to talk about. But in the meantime, the dust management is, you know, something that's inexcusable for it not to be dealt with and dealt with appropriately on a day-to-day basis.
Yes, and, you know, I mean, this operation's been, or particular use, I should say, has been going on, you know, for quite some time, 40 years, almost. And, you know, of course, now we're at the process of the draft DIR, and looking at changing the uses at the site in the future. But of course, we don't know how long that process is going to be, and, you know, we could be moving dirt around for quite a few years. What triggers some kind of environmental study in regards to a use like that? Okay, I mean, and I don't, okay.
Again, historically, that use has operated on the basis of categorical exemption from SEQA-
Okay.
-in the previous permits that were issued. The anticipation was with this renewal, that there'd be an environmental document prepared, whether it's a mitigated negative deck or what have you. That would be something the planning commission would have to decide when they actually consider the approval action. But we were not anticipating moving forward as past practice with the categorical exemption.
Okay. All right, thank you for that. Those are all the questions I have.
Okay. All right, Terry?
I'm not sure I've got questions, but I feel that for the two years I've been sitting up here, I've been getting untruths about this piece of property. We have kept being told we had a 25-foot limit or height, but we just didn't know where the base was from. And in, and before I was sitting up here, we've asked about it, and we always got that answer. So I'm glad we're getting a little bit better answer now, and that basically they just keep building the base, and then they can go up another 25, and then they build the base, and they can go up another 25, and then they build the base, and we're building a second San Bruno mountain with dirt that we're going to have to move again. And I feel violated by this, by this finding this out now, because we should have known about this and shouldn't have gotten those kind of answers to our questions about how big can the pile be until tonight. And it brings up that if they're bringing it up to grade, and then can go up higher again for their pile, it goes to show that we should have a grading ordinance out on the flat areas. I talked to a staff on why we wouldn't need grading permits and hearings on grading in our flat areas, like the Baylands, and because who would want to build a pile? Well, we've got a pile going there, and we haven't issued a permit to change the grade. We just, they get to do it because they keep getting, go up. And I think that shows why we do need, even for a flat piece of dirt or parcel, why we need regulations for those things, so this doesn't happen again. And I hope it doesn't happen again, that we don't know where we can go with things and what height. And I've seen some of the dust mitigation and things that they do on other huge, long-term storage of sawdust or dirt and rocks and things. And they put, they sprinkler it, they cover it with chain look fencing, they put sprinklers up there, and they run them 24 hours a day. And that's what you see up on those piles that I've seen in other states and in other areas. And it's big and ugly, and you know you're stuck with that pile for a long time. So I'm really appalled that we have this and that we didn't know what we really had. And I certainly hope, I know tonight's not the night, but, you know, we've got 70 feet of dirt places there. And I'm just appalled, appalled that we let this happen. Every day, driving down the highway, you could call the AAQMD and have a complaint for what you see blowing off that site. And I just don't understand how we have let it get this far with this little oversight and with this just coming to light now. It's sad. And I'm glad to know that those aren't the heights that the plan for the Baylands is going to be, and that they're going to have to move it all. But it also bothers me that they're going to have to move it all. And that the, you know, we've had people come and complain about their views that, you know, they can't see out to the bay anymore. And at least it gives you an idea of what the 40 feet, the 30 and 40 feet that they're planning on for the base level eventually on the site, on what kind of height and where it's going to be. But this pile is growing every day amazing, and it has gotten probably, it seems like about 30% broader in the last month. They're going clear out to the edges as far as they can, and going up and up and up. So we have to do something. I would be happy to be on the Soil Processing Subcommittee, because we need to try to, certainly if we have a permit that's ongoing that we have no control over, other than to have them control the dust, we need to get a better permit or stop them. That's my little tirade.
It was a good one.
Yeah, yeah. We'll take it. And we have some requests from the audience, public testimony. And both Brad and Michelle, you can sort of take your decision as to, if you come first, Brad, then you won't have to, oh, you like to get up.
Why would I?
Yeah, right, all right, polite.
Michelle, Sam, I'm Brisbane resident, and Terry's tirade was really pretty calm compared to how I feel, because I have been complaining about this for quite a while, like years. And I'd just like to say, early in the evening, we had a discussion about what it says versus what the intent is, all right? And I went back and read the actual permit that, from 2004, that was asked to be extended in 2007. And it says, under conditions of approval, item C, "Materials shall be stockpiled no higher than 25 feet above the surrounding grade." And the surrounding grade is defined in the title as being Tunnel Road and Lagoon Way. And that is what it says, and I don't give a damn about what the intention was. That is what it says. It doesn't say anything about the 25 feet being related to dust control. This is what the permit says.
Do you have a date on that?
Yeah, 2004. And that should have been supplied in your packet along with this memorandum, because there are other things in that permit-
Is that to the planning commission?
That was the planning commission-
This one here, the document that you're looking at is from the-
It's on my phone. It's on my phone. I have a copy of it that I requested a couple of weeks ago, and I believe John's gone to go get a copy of it. And I have serious questions, because the other thing it says in there is, and it says the definition of surrounding grade is in the title of the permit. And also, in this document you got tonight, on page 2, paragraph 3, before UP 803 expired in 2007, the applicant made a timely application to extend for another five years, and it goes on with the story, you know? But that was six years ago, six years ago, and we have not written a new permit. And, and John didn't say, you know, when a new operator was put in place, or when the site draft was done, or when the submitted shortly will be. Is it gonna be another six years of negligence on our part as a city? Also, in the document, it says that all stockpiles are to be removed in 60 days of the cessation of use. It also has documents stating about you can only import 120,000 cubic yards per month. Okay, there's a lot of restrictions in the original permit, exactly as it has written, no matter what the intent was, the way it is written. And if that's the permit that they are quote-unquote "still operating on," six years after it has expired, regardless of whether they put in an application or to extend it, they're in clear violation of their permit on several counts. So although this historical little, you know, document that kind of characterizes what the history has been, is not accurate about what the actual permit says. And I think you need to go back to the source document that was in effect in 2007 and read what it says, and now let's either enforce it or stop it. Because I have called BAA MQD, I have complained, I show you a photograph that I took on August 3rd, Saturday, after complaining on Thursday and Friday and Saturday. The representative who was substituting for the person that was on vacation called me back on Monday morning, clear, foggy, calm Monday morning, and said, "I'm at the soils processing plant, and they seem to have everything under control." And yet, you look at Brad's pictures that were taken on the 14th, does that look like it's under control to you? No, it has not ever been under control. On a windy day, it blows dust all over the place, big surprise. I have stood up here and said this several times over the last several years. So now you believe somebody else who brings a picture and my own pictures? But I told you the dust was blowing so thick over the highway, I could taste it. So, you know, and, and John even said, you know, temporarily over the years, temporarily over the years. You know, we're gonna be living with temporarily for a really long time. And what if there are no buildings? What if, what if, God forbid, you guys don't approve any buildings being built there once you reviewed the EIR? Then what happens to all the dirt? It just sits there at 70, 80, 90, 100, 1,000 feet, when it really is only supposed to be 25 feet above the surrounding grade, defined as Lagoon Way and Tunnel Road, in the document itself, in the title of the document itself? So the city has the authority to enforce dust control, even if it overlaps over the Bay Area Air Quality Control Management. I suggest you do that. And I suggest that you also enforce everything else of the permit that they are currently operating under that expired six years ago. I'm just disgusted at the negligence, and I'm also disgusted that this document doesn't clearly characterize what the permit actually says, regardless of the intent. And that's a lesson for us all to learn about what it actually says as opposed to a summary or the intent. You'd think we'd learned this lesson by now, after all the times the intent was not what actually happened.
Once again, Brad Block, Brisbane resident. So, first of all, thank you, everyone, for the questions that you've asked already of your staff and your attorney. It shows that you have taken this under consideration and, and taken steps to figure, figure out what's really happening here. I just, I guess wanted to maybe, at this point, reiterate now what Michelle said, but this was clearly not a permit to create a mountain. At no point was the intent to create a mountain. And in fact, I believe the permit, as it, as it was originally written, qualified for SEQA exemption on the basis of this 25-foot height limit from surrounding grade. And as any landscape architect or any planner will tell you, when you have a permit for a site, the surrounding grade does not include the site itself, it includes the surrounding area, okay? That's what it means. So the continued SEQA exemption, again, this is predicated on this 25-foot height limit. If, if the applicant were to go and now apply for something higher than that, presumably that would have to be revisited. It's my opinion, if you wanna create a mountain, you probably do need to have an environmental impact report prepared. So, you know, I guess I would just close. Again, thank you for your work here. I'm wondering when we will expect the site to be brought back into compliance, if there's any idea on, on schedule or timeframe. Thank you.
Thank you.
Jamie Dunn, Brisbane resident, you know what I've been doing tonight? I haven't been here, but I've been here. When George Moscone and Harvey Milk were murdered, and we marched down Market Street, there were people along the way who spoke to us, who cried to us, who hollered to us, but one man stuck out, and he said, "Where is your anger? Where is your anger?" That we have a councilperson that has to say, "My little tirade, oh, no, that's not a tirade. We can show you a tirade, we can recall the whole council if the council doesn't do what this city wants. That's a tirade. What else we can do? We can get everybody fired if that's what the city wants. That's a tirade. But we've got people that are going against the law, we've got people that have covered up shit with more shit, with more shit, with more shit, and I'm tired of it. I don't wanna see anybody apologizing from the council for anything. You're here to do the work of the people, we expect it. The staff is here to do the work of the people, we expect it. And you should be angry. You should be angry that this is happening. You should be angry that there are people from the, from the community who have to come and do this damn job, because it's not being done. It's not being done by you or by the staff. Who is not doing this job, and why is it not being done? And why are they getting away with this? And we all know what a bunch of baloney this is. We're all very aware of this baloney. We see it, we hate it, but we look to you to stand up and do something about it. Years ago, Mr. Lance, I said, "Who will speak for the people?" I asked every councilperson, and you said, "I will." Well, where are ya? Let's find out now. I am angry. If you're not angry, I am angry. And you know what? There are a lot of people out there that are as angry as I am. And something's gonna happen. That anger's gonna boil up. We don't expect councilpeople to have to do the very nice talking, trying to appease people, try not to offend. Forget it. They've screwed us royally. We're not taking it anymore. It's about time we had some real strength. I'm gonna be 72 years old. I look up to Ray, he's got me beat, big time. But I, no one angers about, and I feel it. And I've been watching this for 25 years, and I can't believe how people can pile shit upon shit upon shit upon shit, and we still look at it and say, "Well, we don't have the permits, and the permit says this, and then we look back in 1994, plan, it says this, and then there was this permit." Oh, come on, come on, come on, guys. Let's put it together. Don't have people sitting out there like I was at home, watching this and saying, "Where is your anger?" You should have anger. We're being screwed as a city. We can't take it anymore. And I will say this, if it's one of the last things I do in my life in this city, if it has to be done, I'll march in the streets, and I'll ask that question, "Where is your anger?" And believe me, I did it in another place I lived, and I went to every single home. And it took me six weeks, but I went to every single home, and I spoke to every single resident about an issue that had to be changed, and it got changed. And I may be older, I'm a lot wiser, and I can still do it, and I will have people with me. So somebody, hike up your boots, and let's get going. Let's not have these people show up, give us this baloney again. We put up with it again, we all try to be nice, we're not Stepford Wives, we've gotta stop this, all this, okay, well, what do you think, and what do you think, and what do you think, what do you think? Baloney, we all know what we think, and you know what's wrong, you know it's wrong, you've seen it. And you can change it, and you better change it. It's got to be changed. Wasting time, wasting money. You're wasting the breath of every individual in this town. We can't breathe because of this crap that's flying all over the place. And how the heck do they keep doing this? Why didn't somebody stand up here tonight and just rail at them? I would've, because I don't like an untruth. And I hate more than that a second untruth, because it tells me there was, there was no mistake about the first one. And we've had years of this, come on now, somebody get some guts.
Anemelar, Brisbane resident, I think that the time has come indeed to, for you to do something pretty drastic for, to really make a change. And I would hope that you would call for a moratorium on the whole operation until the, all the conditions are studied properly and spelled out what has to happen, in what order. And then there should be, in view of the, what we've heard here of misrepresentations and things, there could be a stop work order right now. But I don't know how you do the moratorium, but that's what I think would be the appropriate thing for the people that you represent. Thank you.
So I quickly scanned through this conditions of approval. So I, but I'm not finding that, that baseline is, so I don't know where you got that information. And, and let me just say, you know, I mean, I, I know that people are angry about this issue. And, you know, I mean, and the best way to handle, you know, an issue is to understand all of the facts and, and stay cool about it. Because, you know, I'm, I'm not talking to you, okay? You know, and so we don't know all the information, we're getting it. And, and, you know, you know, Terry's, you know, anger, I mean, I'm, I'm feeling it too. And, but I also have to take responsibility for myself, because Michelle did come before the council, and she has raised the issue. And, you know, we, we should've dug a little bit deeper in, into this. I, you know, and, but I think this council is, is fully committed to, to making things right. And so, but, but we need all the information first, and I don't think we're there yet.
Well, condition approval A appears to list the location of the site and, and noted as between Beatty Tunnel, Lagoon Way, and Bay Shore Freeway, and gives parcel numbers.
Yeah, but it doesn't say anything about the baseline. And, and not that I'm, you know, I'm trying to find anything that says, okay, yeah, well, it's justifiable. I mean, I think, you know, it's-
Well, this is, this is a legal interpretation, right, David? And, and you've looked this document over, I mean, this is what you based, based it on, right? And I guess this cover sheet that Sheri's making copies of. So I see in conditions of approval on item C, it said, "Materials shall be stockpiled no higher than 25 feet above the surrounding grade." And so I guess the interpretation of the surrounding grade, was that supposed to be? Is it Tunnel Road or, or as what was, you know, interpreted before? So that's, that's the interpretational issue, which you said in your original report, that it's not necessarily that.
Right, right.
Yeah, so I'd like to-
Yeah. Thank you.
Okay.
Counselor member Conway, to, to respond, we have looked at the, at the entire document, the, both the cover sheet and the, and the conditions. Again, I'm coming at this well after the fact, when this, this was adopted. And the, the location in the, and the title, generally the, the title of a resolution is not looked at in setting, in setting an elevation baseline, although I do understand the, the argument. I think one thing that's very important for the council to understand is that there are legal remedies, even before the planning commission was to act on the, the approval or the denial or modification of the permit under section 1741090. The planning commission does maintain continuing jurisdiction over the use permit, and so if there is a concern, either on the planning commission's own initiative or in response to an application or request, to modify or delete any conditions of the permit or impose any new conditions to preserve the public health, safety, and welfare, the planning commission does have the ability to do that very quickly. It would have to schedule a hearing under the, the provisions of the zoning code, but it would not have to wait until it actually considered whether to grant or to continue the permit for another five years. There also is a provision for revocation of an interim use permit, again, upon failing to comply with any of the conditions. That would also require a hearing. So there are legal options. My concern, of course, is simply that the city comply with and follow whatever the legal standards are and the legal process for addressing the concerns that it has about the use permit. the use permit.
May I ask a question, staff? Um, one of our speakers said that the, a CEQA exemption should, um, shouldn't include the site itself. The, um, the surrounding conditions don't include the site itself. Because the site is looked at at a, at a bigger picture. And I'm, I'm not quite sure I'm, it's not coming out as well as he said it. But does that make sense? That when you're doing a site description, um, of surrounding areas, that it doesn't include the project site? My question might not be quite right.
I'm not sure I completely understand the, the question as it was phrased.
Okay. I'm, I'm not sure. I guess I didn't put my notes as eloquently as I should have. Thank you. I'll get it down.
Yeah, I mean, it seems that, that we have not established that baseline. And there isn't any documentation here that says that's the case. I'm reading it and I don't see it.
It says surrounding. That means it surrounds the site.
I, I know. I, again, you know, I'm looking at this thing. It doesn't, it doesn't reach that threshold for me. I'm, that, that's, that's your interpretation. But what we have to do is move forward. I mean, we, we got, you know, I, again, I think we're committed to making it right. And so, you know, forming the subcommittee to make that happen is the appropriate, uh, response. And then getting staff in the different agencies to work with the subcommittee and, and...
Yeah, just for clarification on that, uh, there actually has been a subcommittee. And we have met. And that's what generated this document and a whole bunch of other questions, many of which have not even been brought up yet. Uh, 'cause we're just, we're just looking at an aspect of the problem. And it's a huge problem. And this is just an aspect of it, actually. Uh, and actually Clark and I were the subcommittee. And we did meet, raised a whole lot of questions. That's why we got the staff report and started addressing these things. Uh, and the proposal that came out of that subcommittee after dozens of unanswered questions, uh, 'cause the city wasn't sure, the staff wasn't sure either, actually. Uh, and they needed to investigate further. And some of that they've done, but some of it still remains to be done. And there were a lot of CEQA questions that, that they didn't know the answer to, actually, uh, that, that the two of us asked. So, um, the proposal was that the conversation tonight, go back to the subcommittee. Uh, we have further conversation with staff as to how, how we proceed here. Uh, you know, whether we come back to the council for more direction, whether we, you know, come back and say, okay, ask the planning commission to hold a hearing and, you know, do what they need to do, you know, ASAP. So that kind of was the proposal. Because as the city attorney says, you just can't go willy-nilly. You've got to follow the legal procedures. Uh, and our suggestion was that we take all of this back to the subcommittee. We try to put it together, get some more answers, come back to a council meeting. And if we want to give instructions, let's say, to the planning commission, then, you know, we can do that.
I think that's the most appropriate, uh, measures to take.
My, my concern...
So that was, that's, that was the idea anyway. We can change that.
Yeah, no, yeah, I mean, it would be nice if you'd say that earlier.
Thank you for the backstory, because I, I wasn't...
Yeah, I don't either.
But, but my concern is this pile, this mountain is growing so quickly. I mean, you can see it growing in the last two, three weeks. I don't think we have the time to sit and think and look and think and look and discuss. I think we need to get a quicker action than coming back and referring it. And I, I, I think we need to, um, do something in the next five days, seven days, ten days. I think we need to, to act on this.
Yeah, well, let me ask a, a question of procedure. I think, I mean, we all sort of feel, uh, that kind of urgency. But on the other hand, you got to follow legal procedure, which is a dilemma. I mean, the moratorium has come up, but you, we just can't do that without, I presume, following some legal procedure. So I guess I asked, because I certainly understood the city attorney to say that that needed to go through the planning commission. Is that the case? Can we do that on our own if we have it agendized? Or does it have to go through the planning commission first? Or what's the legal procedure that we have to follow?
The, the procedure for modifying or suspending the use permit would require the hearing before the, the planning commission, uh, because under the, the city's ordinances, it was issued by the planning commission and they retained jurisdiction. There certainly is nothing that would prevent the council from directing staff to approach the operators and to request basically a negotiated moratorium while this issue is being looked at in an agreement that the, the height will not exceed whatever the current level is, uh, until there's, there's, again, the opportunity for further review and a decision in terms of what direction to go. Uh, that wouldn't require a planning commission hearing. It's something that the council could provide direction on, uh, without, again, going through any additional process. If the, the operator declines to, to agree to that, then you would still have the option of having it heard by the planning commission. But it certainly could be approached on an informal basis, uh, and a negotiated basis between the city and the operators.
So that is a, um, um, optional, um, that we'd ask them to stop while we discussed it or not raise the height. But if it was a health or safety issue, we could enact that immediately, correct? Or if there was...
If it was a health or safety issue, then it would go back to the planning commission immediately for their hearing on either revocation or modification of the conditions. It would still have to go back to the planning commission. And that could be done on an expedited basis, but they would be the, the body that would hear that.
So there's no method to say, if we were inclined, not to say that we are, um, you know, stop today? Unless it was imminent threat or danger?
I think maybe you're talking about a, a urgency...
Emergency moratorium.
Urgency ordinance, which would be a moratorium. Is that, is that the...
Yeah, it's not. David, uh... Yeah. I mean, a, a moratorium generally is prospective going forward. So it would certainly prevent the initiation of any new similar uses or any permits for any similar types of, of dirt stockpiling. A, a moratorium wouldn't by itself affect a permit that was, was issued previously. Now, there is a provision that says that in the event of significant dust generation, uh, the public works inspector can immediately shut down the use. However, that is only until the project is brought into compliance. So if there was a dust issue and the inspector or the city was satisfied that that had been addressed by whatever measures were appropriate, then at that point they would be allowed to, to reopen. But if that problem is ongoing, then it, it can be shut down immediately, uh, based on that dust generation until it's addressed.
So, um, the city manager's going to come up with a very creative solution to this dilemma here. Uh, so I shouldn't probably interfere.
Well, I think you oversold my, my thought process. I was going to suggest that, um, you know, the, not to put Jonathan on the spot, but he's here. And this is his, um, operations. In terms of, um, any sort of kind of voluntary immediate action, um, might be best to ask him tonight what, what he feels he could do or what sort of conversation he would feel that he could have with us in a short, shorter term. Um, I think as Terry has noted, there, this is getting bigger by the day. Um, and they do have significant contracts that they're currently, um, working on. So, um, I'm, am, I guess, you know, there, there's a whole issue, I think, long-term where we go with this, uh, which I think we can get our hands around. And, you know, just because it's, piles are a certain height today, doesn't mean that we can't get them to be lower in the, in the future. But in terms of any immediate action in the next, you know, week or two weeks, you know, I think we really have to have the cooperation of the, um, of the operator. So I'm not going to put Jonathan on the spot, but he's the one who would have to, um, to talk to the companies that he has leases with out there.
Yeah, it, and I was going to suggest that, when's their next council meeting?
The third, or, um, the third? I think the third.
Third is September? It's a Tuesday.
Correct.
Tuesday? Okay. 'Cause there's a whole lot of things that could go on between now and then. Uh, the subcommittee could meet, the staff could get...
Oh, yeah.
The, the conversation could happen with, uh, Mr. Sharpe Man. And he could talk maybe to some of the operators, see what's going on. I mean, if I were sitting in Mr. Sharpe's shoes, I'm thinking, God, I'm going to move all that dirt and lower it, then, oh my God, you know? I mean, he must have some problems too. And, uh, so I think, uh, 'cause that can create a lot of problems as well. So I think there's a really big, complex issue here that needs to be addressed expeditiously, you know? And maybe we can do the first step by agendizing it on the next meeting. Try to do, you know, what we can between now and then. Uh, if we need to go to the planning commission for, you know, something more formal, then we could certainly, you know, instruct the, the planning commission and the staff accordingly at that time. But in the meantime, let's try to see what we can do, you know, informally. And also get our act together better for next steps. Be my suggestion.
Yeah, I mean, I'd hope that within the next, uh, days between this meeting and the next meeting, that you have a pretty good update for us. And hopefully, uh, a, a path forward for, you know, what the interim use out at that site is going to be. And also the, you know, getting, you know, a handle on some of the dust mitigation efforts out there. So, yeah, let's hear it from Jonathan.
Yeah, if he wants to.
Jonathan Sharpe Man, UPC Sunquest. And, and we're happy to sit down with staff and the representatives of, um, BACMed and any other agency that wants to discuss interim solutions. We also, as before, remain committed to living within whatever conditions of approval on any permit that you issue or that you extend for our site. We will live within those conditions. And, and we want to work with you to define what those are and to define in our contractual obligations, um, what those responsibilities are to the people who are, who are actually operating out there. And so this is, this is something we remain committed to, uh, working with the city on, uh, working with our operators on. And, um, as, as soon as we get the call from staff, we will, we will schedule, uh, whatever time is necessary to address these issues.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, thank you.
Okay, sounds great.
Yeah, you know, another thing that, you know, that you guys address, and, and John had mentioned it in the staff report, was, uh, you know, sure, right now they're, they're studying, yeah, or sampling the soil that comes to the side to make sure that it's, it's, it's clean. But, you know, I, I think we need to have a better process for evaluating that. And so I hope that is also part of the package.
Well, that, that's kind of something that cropped up during the, during the extension part too, you know, is, is, you know, these measures and everything like that is what do you want to put in this permit going on? So it's not like this is, you know, really overnight thing. It's, it's, it is a process. And it's like, well, you want to get it right. And I guess asking the city attorney if we send it back or when we go back to the planning commission, uh, with the specified set of conditions that, that we want, and then they say, oh, shoot, man, forgot a few things. How, how quickly can you send it back? Because then you, once you, once you do that, you've got a contract for X number of years. And it, could you modify that? Yeah.
At, at any point during the, the five-year term of the contract of, the, the five-year term of the permit, rather, uh, if you determine that there are further problems, there are issues that are not being addressed, then you can add at any time during that, that five-year permit period, any additional conditions. It has to go through the hearing process. There have to be findings that would support that. But it, it's not bound to be only the, the conditions that were issued at the beginning of the, the five-year permit time.
Yeah. And, and John, uh, what was your vision as far as when you thought originally this should go before the planning commission?
We're waiting for an updated ops plan that had the input from the regional board and the, um, county environmental health. We'd have to advertise it thirty days in advance. I was hoping by the end of October, we'd be to the commission.
Okay.
I don't have the, all the work product that would guarantee that at this particular moment.
But interim, I mean, you know, we could work out a, an agreement, uh, with the property owner or with the, um, with, with the soil recycler, yeah, with the soil processing company to come up with something that, that would work for, until you had something, until we had something in place permanently. But you're going to bring it back before the, the council, before it would go to the planning commission?
Oh, yeah, of course.
So...
Let's give direction, you know, additional direction to the planning commission on it.
Definitely.
As, as far as the cubic yards that are allowed, are they still within that permit amount? Item O? How many trucks is that per month?
It depends whether it's a ten-wheeler or an end-up man, ma'am. Catching me a little bit off guard, 'cause I don't have the records in front of me, but I don't recall the Bayland Soil Processing operation ever having a month when their import exceeded that.
That's a lot of dirt.
The current...
Hundred and twenty thousand. There's a lot of dirt.
The mountain's growing pretty damn quick.
Yeah, no.
I mean, it's fresh soil and it's coming in very quick. I, I don't have a thought process to correlate that to...
Hundred and twenty thousand's a lot of yardage, ma'am. I, I think, um, the last report I have for, uh, for BSP was for June. And that showed ninety thousand yards, I think, of import for that month.
Yeah. So that's something we could bring back at our next meeting, I think, uh, some, some data, right? Yeah.
Sure, I could bring back the data, sir.
So we're going to have an updated report on this in two weeks?
September third, I said. Yeah.
Whatever that works out today.
Okay, okay. We can do that, right? Okay, great. Uh, now we got, we got a time problem. Clear your my watch. It's twenty-five after eleven. And we didn't even extend the meeting. Uh, and we have a whole A, B, C, D under new business and, uh...
Mr. Mayor?
Which has been here all evening. And, uh, I have a suggestion to make. I don't know, maybe, let's see if they're considering...
I, I think, um, items A and B would, could go fairly quickly. Um, and then item C, I do have the, um, consultant who did the report. Mr. Swig is here tonight.
Ooh, okay.
Um, so I was thinking if we could do A, B and C and, um, I'll, I'll buy Mitch lunch, uh, I owe him lunch if we, uh, 'cause I, I think that one may take a little bit more time. We could delay that to the September third.
But, you know, since, um, since Rick is here, um, maybe we can move C to, um...
Do C first?
First, yeah.
Yeah.
I, I do, I do also, um, we had an intern work on B and, uh, he's gone back to school on Thursday. So if we could get B done as well, C.
So, uh, yeah, we're just...
I think we got them all done. We're just going to stay here until we get it done.
I'll move to extend the meeting till midnight.
Second.
Um, Randy just told me that we don't, A is not time-sensitive. So we could do B and C.
Okay.
And we have a logistical problem with the DVDs, 'cause we're, we've gone through four hours, so she needs to change it. It's going to take a couple minutes if you want it to be recorded.
Let's take a break.
Okay. Want to vote on the extension to midnight? Okay, so, uh... Okay, so are we, are we still recording now, or not?
We did. You didn't call the question.
No, we're not recording, she has to change the CD.
Let's take the break and we'll, we'll...
So, we'll do that after, okay. If she's not recording.
You're still rolling right now, so if you want to make a promotion to...
Okay, the motion was to extend to midnight. There's actually first and seconded. Hold your favor, please say it.
Hi.
Hi, okay. No, 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 we're never gonna make nine minutes yet.
Not with this council, heck no.
Change, change the DVD, yeah, right, yeah.
So, we, we don't need to do A, that's the time-sensitive.
Okay.
So, we could do B and C.
Okay. Why don't we do C first, though, since I didn't realize he was here?
Okay.
And then we do... Yeah, B after that, Economic Development Plan. And then...
Oh, I'd say yes, but...
We're gonna do C first, and then B, and then...
On the third, what about the meeting after that? You'll be back then?
He'll be back, yeah.
Okay. Okay. Okay, all right, I'm sorry. And we need to get that approval for me to be on a spur panel, too. Thanks, Mitch.
Great, I'll ask Clark, are you available tomorrow afternoon?
I'm busy. Sure.
Um, at least maybe like a technical, a technical appendices to the general plan or something like that, yeah.
Yeah, and Rick, I'm sure you'd probably kind of consider this as a technical document. I mean, because it's, it's very, very thorough, you know, and it's very, it's very good, actually, a lot of good information in here. And so, how long do you like state that, okay, this is for this block of time, or?
You know, till-
Or is it until, like you said in there, until it develops and?
Well, I, I, I think the biggest point that I tried to make is that you, to have a successful hotel development, you have to have your own really defined point of demand. And right now, I, and I, I finished this document in June, and so we've had a summer. And without looking at any documents, I can tell you that the two hotels on Sierra Point have had their biggest summers in history. Why? Because there's no rooms left in San Francisco, and therefore that demand has compressed. But that demand doesn't belong to those two hotels. That demand is a coincidence of something else, which is San Francisco being sold out. So the point that I, that is the most important is that any hotel that is developed out there to be successful must have demand that it owns. And that demand is going to come out of the development of the, the land which is currently vacant. It's also going to come out of the buildings out there that are currently mostly empty, if not mostly empty. And so, when, when that developable land infills and becomes a biotech campus, becomes another type of headquarters campus, when the empty or mostly empty buildings fill up with headquarters-type businesses that have people coming to visit those campuses, that's what's going to fill hotel rooms. In the meantime, it's going to be borrowed demand. And it's going to be borrowed demand from compression out of San Francisco, because there are no hotels being built in San Francisco, nor will there be hotels coincidentally built in San Francisco for, of significance, there are two small projects being done, but a hundred rooms or so, of significance before 2018 or 2020. And they are full now, and it's a parallel project, a parallel situation. But the, the demand that's, that's there now, it's, it's coming out of San Francisco, it comes out of Oyster Point. And, and, but it isn't owned by Sierra Point, it's borrowed.
Right.
So, that's a very, very tenuous and fragile situation, because if that demand does no longer compress out of San Francisco, if that demand is no longer needed from the Oyster Point or South San Francisco demand quarter, then those hotels go back to what they were previously, which is empty and even more unprofitable than they are today. So that's, that's, that really wraps it for you, I think.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, you know, when we had our subcommittee meeting and got briefed by Rick on what the study eventually pointed out, yeah, sure, I was disappointed. I was hoping that this could be another source of revenue for the city. You know, it's interesting that, you know, you're talking about this borrowed demand, and that the feasibility of a hotel is, you know, you're basing it on being able to stand on its own.
Exactly.
You know, you know, when we, when you, when we talked about the other hotels, you know, that you had advised not to build, I think one of them, I don't know, both of them.
The Radisson.
The Radisson. But yet, that has been a very good revenue source for, for us. But maybe it has not been a financial benefit for the developer who built it. And, and, you know, and so, you know, you're looking at those, those things, you know, you're looking at feasibility, is it, is it, is it good for us if it's built, and even if we got half of it, you know, filled, you know, and the other half didn't have, you know, folks a good portion of the time, but sometime it is fully, you know, full capacity. You know, it's, I, I mean, of course, you want, you want there to be a win-win situation for everybody. And I think what you've done here, you stated, yeah, if you want to have that win-win situation, you, you have to do these things, like get the other properties developed and, and filled. Not, not just built, but they have to be thriving. Then the hotel is the last piece of, of the potential puzzle. And even then, you know, you're only recommending a 200-room hotel and not the 700-room hotel that has been appropriated for that site. And I think that's something that this council then will have to address. You know, okay, do 700 rooms make sense out there in the design guidelines? You know, probably not, so we need to, you know, kind of get that, you know. But this information has been very helpful in kind of providing a reality check, so thank you for that.
And I think also the thing is, what you make a very good point. For you, there's, it's undoubtedly, if it was built tomorrow morning, it would be an immediate revenue source for the city of Brisbane. For the developer, not so good. And, and so, in attracting developers, or in attracting, even if you had a willing developer, in attracting the debt to enable that developer to build that hotel would, that they would, they would stumble upon this, my same findings, whether done by myself or somebody else. And they would, the lender would say, you know, talk to somebody else until there was nobody to talk to, and you're, you're not going to get it built anyway. So, so that's, you know, that's, that's where, as a city, I, I absolutely understand it's a great revenue source if built tomorrow. But there are other, there are other circumstances that, that fall into the mix financially. So that's, that's where the car crash occurs.
Terry, do you have any questions?
No, not, not really, very interesting report, and it would be a good revenue source for the city if, if it were feasible.
Right.
Right, exactly.
I have two minor little questions.
Sure.
Now, I understand the overall economic analysis makes perfect sense to me. It's depressing, but undoubtedly true. But there are two little things, that when Sierra Point was first planned, people thought it would be great to have a hotel out there by the marina, because that would be a big attraction. So my first question is, was that a silly thought? And the second thing is that developers, for years, have said, oh, God, if we only had better freeway access, everything would be turned around. So, and that, you mentioned that as well in the report. So my question is, those two little things, what's your response?
Sure, the, the marina, the, the marina doesn't, doesn't do any good, because there's 500 boats out there that have 500 beds in it, think of it that way. So those, those folks aren't going to use your-
No, no, not, not as users, but as a wonderful scenic attraction.
Yeah, but-
Like Sausalito, you know.
Yeah, but, well, I'll use your Sausalito, thank you for coming up with Sausalito. If you turn around and stop facing the boats, you face the, you face a town which has significant retail, lots of restaurants, lots of action, and other energy. So when, when Sierra Point develops and has multiple restaurants, a couple movie theaters and some other action, then that's, that's part of the, the chemical mixture. Okay, and the second question?
The freeway access.
Oh, the freeway exits are, that's a tough one. To, you just consider, that's where, even more so, that, that infill, that, that developing of its own, owned demand sources becomes critical. Because Oyster Point is but spitting distance away. However, you have to drive three and a half miles to get there. And so, given the choice of staying in the most beautiful hotel over the beautiful, most beautiful marina in the entire world, or being across the street from where I really want to do business, where am I going to, where am I going to be? I'm going to be across the street. It's a location, location, location issue. And, and those freeway entrances and exits don't do this project any favors, by, by any means.
So that, in your mind, that does become a significant inhibition?
Significant problem.
If you know the territory.
Okay.
If you're on the internet, you might not know about those details.
Yeah, for sure, I mean, that was one of my, my first learning curve.
If you didn't know.
My first learning curve was when I went over there, and I went, wow! And I drove right past Sierra, the Sierra Point exit to Oyster Point, and had to turn around and come right back, you know, and I live in San Francisco, so, yeah.
But you can do it going that direction, try doing it from the other direction.
Exactly. Rick, just an off question here, why, why is San Francisco so full now? Does that have to do with the America's Cup, or, you know, the economy recovering? What do you think?
You have a, it's a, I think I've said it before, you got a three-legged stool. You have tremendous commercial demand, the growth of, of internet and biotech, whether both Mission Bay, the new Upper Market Street, south of Market, zero vacancy rate in commercial, that's happening. Convention business is at a peak, 900,000 room nights a year generated by convention business. In fact, Moscone is, can no longer handle the demand, which is creating an expansion need.
So they're expanding, right.
Right, and then third, tourism. You know, the economy's back, San Francisco is, is an amazing international destination, because even our most expensive room rate rates, which might be at $500 or $600 at a Ritz-Carlton or Four Seasons, it's literally half of what the same product would cost if you went to London, Paris, or Rome. So, so for, for the European traveler, even though allegedly there is a, an economic problem over there, it's a 50% discount.
Right.
So walk in Union, go to Union Square tomorrow, walk across Union Square and listen for the English language, and you will not hear it. And it won't be indigenous species speaking Chinese or, or, or Spanish. It'll be Danish and German and Fran, French and Italian. It's, it's really extraordinary, I've never seen that in my life like this. It's really amazing. What I would, what I would recommend you do as a, to keep this document living and breathing, is I would put it away for about 24 months, and then bring it out again, and see what the crystal, how bad the crystal ball was broken when it was, was first written. And, and, and then revisit, because there is a timeline here that is recommended. And two years from now, the, the financial markets may have changed. Two years from now, there will be more demand for hotel rooms. And so, maybe instead of a 2020, it'll become a 2018. And even if you take something up in 2015, it's going to take you three to five years to get it built anyway. So I'd recommend that you dust this off, don't have to call me back, but you dust this off and revisit this in 2015 for the future.
Okay, sounds good. All right, excellent, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Very good. So Stuart, can I ask you, have we seen our coffers fatten up in the last three months from the hotel?
Yes, the hotels are doing very well for us.
Okay, are we beating our projections from the budget?
Um, not yet.
Thanks, Rick.
All right.
Okay, so the next is the priority conservation areas.
Hello, my name's Tony Aguilar, I'm an intern here. And earlier this summer, the council requested staff look into the PCA grant program, so I did. And just really quickly, the PCA grant program is part of a larger program called Plan Bay Area that the SCC, which stands for State Conservancy, State Coastal Conservancy, and MTC, which is the Metropolitan Transportation Commission, put together in response to the Climate Protection Act of 2008. So it's composed of two components, which are PDAs, primary, priority development areas, which promote compact development, and PCAs, which are priority conservation areas, which promote open space and natural habitat. And so, you can receive grant money for having a PCA. If you're going to do anything with it, or just keep it as open space, but you need to have it first. And when I found out about this, the deadline was in like two weeks, July 19th. So we were unable to meet that deadline. So I had a conversation with San Bruno Mountain Watch, and they recommended two properties, the Levison and Peaking Handicraft properties. And the Open Space and Ecology Committee recommended the Mackinson properties as potential PCAs. And also, San Bruno Mountain Watch has made contact with staff in Daly City, South San Francisco, and Brisbane about perhaps designating all of San Bruno Mountain as a PCA. And it'd be beneficial for us to go ahead and have one in Brisbane, because it lets you be able to apply for grant money, so.
Okay, council, I have a couple of things, but-
No, I, I think that-
You ready, Terry?
Go ahead.
No, I, thank you, Tony.
Yeah, thank you.
Report, but I, I think Levison, Peaking Handicraft are kind of priority areas, you know. I didn't catch what the Open Space and Ecology had asked, what did they request?
The Mackinson properties?
McKesson.
McKesson.
Oh, okay.
Which surround the end of the Northeast Ridge Industrial Park, between the park. I thought they were going to contribute those, they were supposed to dedicate those. So why should anybody else pay for them if they're going to contribute to them?
I mean, once they're designated as a priority conservation area, it's, I don't, the past grants have not only been for the purchase of properties, but also for the maintenance of properties.
Okay.
So even if they are donated to us, declaring, you know, trying to get them designated as a PCA could still be beneficial.
Okay.
I think with the McKesson properties, that they were to be donated into the park system, but the park won't accept them until they've been-
Fixed to a certain level.
Brought up to a certain standard.
All right, got it.
Can I ask you a question of the city attorney? Regards to Peaking Handicraft and, and Levison property, that if we designated those priority conservation areas, I mean, because we do have an open space plan, and right now, they're not designated open space. Would that put us in a predicament of perhaps potential taking, or, or reducing value, or anything like that?
Councilmember Colley, I don't believe that it would. The designation as a PCA simply makes the properties eligible for grants. It doesn't affect their, their status as, as private properties, so I don't think it would be a problem.
Oh, okay, very good, thank you. I was going to say, the thought that I had was that the most important thing to achieve is to get the San Bruno Mountain Park area, the Habitat Conservation Area designated as a PCA. Because as the way I read all the material here, there are deadlines for grants, but you can apply anytime for a PCA. And then, when the time comes that they have another grant period, then, okay, then you're already ready. And so I think the most important land area to get designated is the San Bruno Mountain and the Habitat. And then, all these other areas are essentially adding to that. Because I don't see these individual parcels as having, because it says regional value. Well, acquiring the Peaking Handicraft is not a regional value, but if you have the whole mountain as a PCA, and then you're adding to that, it seems to me that your chances of, of getting grant funding would be greater. So that was kind of the way I read it. So I'm hoping, and I know that's one of the things that's proposed here, that you work together, you know, with the trustees and the county and, and go after it. But it would have to be a cooperative effort with all the surrounding cities in the county. To me, that's number one priority. And then the other things that, you know, when the grants come through, you say, okay, we got this priority conservation area, now we'd like to add these additional Brisbane acres, or part of the Levison, or Peaking Handicraft, or what have you. And I'd go even further, too, because they also talk about the connection between ecological areas in the bay. And that, you know, that's in, in the Baylands plan. And so why shouldn't we try to also think about Ice House Hill? Or, you know, the riparian wetlands that we were talking about, which is a connection between, you know, the mountain and the bay. These are all possibilities, but it still seems to me that the key central component is San Bruno Mountain. That's what's really got it designated. And then all these other things are basically become adding to that, might be, anyway.
Yeah, no, I think making San Bruno Mountain a PCA on its own is, is, is the number one priority. And I think you, you'll stand the greatest success. You know, I think the Baylands, I, I think the Baylands could be a separate PCA, because you have a PDA and a PCA, you know, that are working together.
Yeah, but we should include them, too, you know.
The, you know, and, and, you know, Clark, you brought up the, the Peaking Handicraft and, and Levison properties. So in our general plan, you know, it's, it states that it's, you know, that, that there is some development that is allowed. And I know, Dave, you talked about that it doesn't matter if it's private property or not, but what if the general plan states that the properties, you know, have some development on them? Does that, would you need a general plan amendment to?
We wouldn't want to do that.
No, okay, all right, I, I'm just, just asking, I mean, because I, I guess, yeah.
I think you don't want to get into anything that's going to be zoning.
Right, right.
Okay, just clear of that.
Yes.
That's, we just stay clear.
Then you don't run into problems.
Yeah, right.
Okay, yes, I, I, I'd go with that, you know.
So, I mean, that's kind of the direction, and I don't know who's going to follow up on that.
Is it Levison and Peaking Handicraft? Wouldn't that be considered part of San Bruno Mountain, even though they're-
That's the point, that's exactly the point.
Yeah, yeah.
But they're, you're basically adding to this really important regional ecological resource. That's, that's how I would conceptualize it.
We did have a brief conversation about this at the last HCP meeting in May or June, whenever that was. And the parks, or the San Mateo County Parks was going to take a look at that. But I think the reason we wanted to come forward tonight was that we don't control that process, but we do control process within Brisbane. So we thought, at least we could move forward with what's in Brisbane, while we still try to work with the county and the other cities in terms of the larger thing.
But I think if we get that county thing, we're going to have a lot more-
Yeah, if we get that, we kind of have everything else.
Well, even though we, it will take quite a bit of cooperation to get the entirety of San Bruno Mountain between the county and our little areas that are adjoining it, designated, you know, because you'd need quite a bit of cooperation. I think that having at least the start of our priority conservation areas with the Peaking and the, and the Levison property would be good, because it's something that if a grant were to come up, we could act on our own towards those properties. Whereas it may take quite a while to get the whole of San Bruno Mountain, or even our portion of San Bruno Mountain. And then, of course, any grant proposal would need to encompass the, again, the cooperation between the entities.
Right, right. Okay, I think it's clear where we're at.
Yep.
Thanks, Tony.
All right, okay, thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
So we're going to do the rest of new business at a subsequent meeting.
So, could I say, if I can't eat, Mitch, you're going to be out of town in September, the 3rd. I, I think it's really important to have Mitch do the-
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
His presentation, so if we can put that for the second meeting, right?
Right.
We'll, we'll put it under presentations, the first thing on the agenda.
I think we owe him that.
We do.
Yeah, we should look at this thing fresh, I mean, yeah, I'm tired.
So there are just one other thing, if we, maybe the other things can be postponed until the next meeting. But there's one thing we needed, I wanted to get the council support for. Mr. Sharpe, who just left, has put together a panel presentation at SPUR on transit-oriented development in the Baylands. And he, of course, is on the panel, and the planning director of MTC is on the panel. And the suggestion is that the mayor of Brisbane be on the panel. And I'm aware of how careful one has to be in that role. And so one of my careful aspects here is to make sure that it's okay with my fellow council members to go ahead with that, because evidently they need to know by tomorrow. That's why we're doing it now.
Yeah.
Yeah, so what do you think? What's that?
Today.
Today.
Oh, tomorrow, okay, all right, well, tomorrow morning. Is that okay?
As long as that's okay with the city attorney.
I have talked with the city attorney.
Oh, you did?
Yes, and you, of course, I would never do anything without talking to the city manager and the city attorney. Hey.
So let it be said, so let it be done.
Okay, all right, so it sounds okay. So you're going to tell Jonathan, because he's expecting you to let him know. Okay, anything else for the good of the order, or may we move to adjourning in the memory of William Spencer, or?
Just one quick thing, the thing by Senate Bill 543 or something by, I guess, Cherry.
Terry Hill?
That maybe staff can review that. I think the League of California Cities is saying that it really kind of undermines the city's power, and would ask that we send in letters of opposition to the, now it's going to the Assembly.
Did it already pass the Senate?
Well, it's passed the, what committee?
Assembly.
I'm not, you, the latest I heard, which I think was Thursday, was that there was a meeting set up between Senator Hill and, and the League staff. So let, let me, I'll, I'll research it and get back to you tomorrow. But I guess what you're saying is you, if, if the, if it's moving forward into committee, then send a letter of opposition?
I don't even know what it's about.
Yeah.
It, it basically is a bill that would make it illegal for PACs that have, such as the, the one that supports the League of Cities, to be able to support, use money that they get from the cities to, if they, excuse me.
Advocate.
If they get money from the cities, then they can't go and advocate on a statewide ballot measure or a state proposition.
Even if the cities say yes, we want you to do it.
Well, the, the issue is that no city, in the past, the, you know, the League has had a PAC that has, and I'm forgetting the name of it, but it basically used non-public revenue to do its political activity, right? So this is basically saying that if your organization has underlying monies from public organizations, then you can't participate in the political process. It's really, I mean, I think the way the League looks at it is it's, it's an effort to mute the, the voice of, of the cities.
Through the League.
I would, I would want to look at it before I recommend it not supporting it.
Right, that's fair.
And I don't have enough information to, to say that.
It, Jessica did send something out last week about it.
There's been a whole series of emails.
There's been a series of stuff that I-
We got an email today on it, so.
Okay, I'll, I'll pull together in the morning and send you out kind of what looks like the current status of it is.
Right, okay.
Be interesting to see what Kevin Mullen thinks of it, you know.
Yeah.
Talking about you and Michelle, boy, Jessica and-
Okay, so that's what we're going to do about this legislation. Terry, you had something before we adjourned?
No, no, I was going to make that, that, that motion to adjourn, and I got interrupted.
Oh, okay, in memory of James Spencer, 3rd. Right, on favor, please say aye.
All right.
Aye.
Aye. He did it.